Well, we try to be efficient.
Yeah.
I saw him in the Rose Bowl. He played for Stanford. They couldn't lay, I think they're playing Iowa or something.
Good evening. I'm going to call this meeting to order. The time is 7:30. This is the regular council meeting for February 12th. Clerk, can you please do a roll call?
Mayor Pro Timbliss.
I'm here.
Councilman Fleming.
Here.
Councilman Muir.
Here.
Counselor Rohrbach.
Here.
Councilman Soltes.
Here.
Counselor Wright.
Here.
Mayor Grabston.
I am here, thank you. The invocation and pledge this evening will be led by Counselor Rohrbach. I invite you to stand if you would like.
As today is Random Acts of Kindness Day, we're going to be making a proclamation about that that led my thoughts in today's invocation. So, in a world where the rhetoric of leaders often sounds more like the taunts of a playground bully, it's easy to lose hope for kindness. We admit it feels a bit like bringing flowers to a gunfight. We admit it feels a bit like, oh, I'm sorry. May we learn how to respond in love and not fear. May we learn what it means to speak with conviction without using words as weapons. May we learn to carry both strength and gentleness, to offer kindness even in our anger, to listen before lashing out. We are all capable of love, kindness, gentleness, and self-control. May we offer these the same to our neighbors, teachers, families, and leaders with confidence, conviction, and a sound mind. May kindness be our steady filter and our sure companion. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can I please have a motion to appoint our deputy clerk as our city clerk this evening? Annette, sure?
Your Honor. Yes. So moved.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor.
Yes.
Support.
Thank you. A motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries. First up, additions or deletions? Are there any additions or deletions this evening? All right. Seeing none, we will move into presentation. First up, we have from our Oakland County Treasurer, Robert Wittenberg. Mr. Wittenberg, floor is yours.
I'm over here.
Yep.
Truly all set up here. I have the computer, PowerPoint. Tonight's my first night traversing the county, so bear with me as I go through this. It's actually not that long, but I was with all of you last year. I don't know if that was February, March, but it's the tax cycle. So, March 31st typically is the foreclosure deadline. It's the deadline this year because it falls on a weekend, so April 1st. But how it works is three years prior, so for this year, it's 2024. So, anyone that owes their 2021 or prior year taxes is subject to foreclosure. And so, as I tell everyone, right, well, the work that we do in our office, our job is to collect taxes. We have no interest in foreclosing, but obviously, that is something that is there in case people don't pay their taxes. And so, it's a mechanism to use, but we want to work with people. So, I have just a brief PowerPoint to go over with you. So, this just tells us a little bit about our, and it's on the screens for everyone that's here. The numbers have since been updated, but I went and met with, out of 62 cities, villages, and townships in Oakland County, we have more than any other county, met with 59 of the treasurers. So, went to 59 different communities, all the way around the county, and got to meet with everyone to kind of see what's going on in their community, how we can be helpful and how we can collaborate. I won't go through all this stuff, but this is some of the things that we're working on within our office, the investment of our funds, some other things that are on here. But again, just to highlight some of the work that we're doing with our office and the team that we have, the amazing team in our office. So, again, I don't want to take too much time. So, last year, property tax foreclosure prevention effort. So, that was when I came to speak to all of you. And again, working my way around, tonight I was in Waterford before here, and you are the first two communities that I'm visiting as I work my way. So, as we said, it's in essence a three-year process. So, taxes like this year, right, your taxes are owed to the local community here. People, you know, all the residents here in Madison Heights owe your property taxes to Madison Heights. If they turn over delinquent to us, if you don't pay them March 1st, then the county, in essence, becomes the collections agent for those taxes. And so, last year for 2023 taxes, it was anyone that owed 2020 or prior year taxes that was subject to foreclosure. This just gives you an idea of how that works in, at the very top, for over, you know, close to 45,000 parcels were turned over to us as delinquent from their 2020 taxes. And then you fast forward, and I won't go through all this, but you fast forward to the very bottom of the page, you know, if we are not able to collect, if people don't reach out to us to get on a repayment agreement, if we're not able to find resources for people, then foreclosure is obviously that last resort. Last year, we sold or took it to auction 95 properties. It was our lowest that we've ever had in Oakland County. It was our lowest number. If you think of the thousands and thousands of, hundreds of thousands of properties in Oakland County, only 95, of which most of those were vacant. So, you know, it was a really robust outreach. There was also some safety nets that were put together at the federal level with COVID relief dollars that went down to the state. Unfortunately, that program that I spoke to all of you about last year, my half, has been exhausted, so that program is no longer available. So, just FYI. So, this kind of talks about those numbers and the work that we did, and we're hoping to keep those numbers low again this year, and that's why I'm out chatting with people. So, specifically on the 2024 taxes, I talked about the three-year process. The deadline this year again is April 1st as opposed to March 31st because of the weekend. So, if you don't take anything else from what I say to you tonight, the one thing I want you to take from this is that we are here to help. Please reach out to us, and I'll go over the ways to contact us. But if you or someone you know owes 2021 or prior year taxes, please reach out to us. We schedule one-on-one taxpayer assistance meetings, TAMS as we call them in our office, and we meet with people to talk about their unique situation and see how we can possibly help them. So, calling our office or going online, oakgov.com/treasurer is our website, 248-858-0611 is our phone number. And so, you know, we're in that, kind of the dark blue community outreach is ongoing. So, we're doing that. And then that bottom one on the right, that green is asking all of you to help spread the word. If this impacts you, please reach out. If someone in your family, your friends, your neighbor, please have them reach out to us. We really reach out to everyone. There's probably about 12 notices that go to someone before they would be foreclosed upon, including two visits to their property to post something on their property. So, we're doing all that we can to try to notify people, and some people sometimes are scared to reach out to us, and we want people to feel comfortable reaching out to us. So, we can use your help on that. Last couple things. Within our office, we have our Financial Empowerment Center, and this is Rita who runs this department is a financial coach. So, she helps people put a budget together, helps them with debt, even helps small businesses put together a, like a business plan. You know, she does a really, really great job. It is no cost to you. It is confidential what you discuss. She meets with you one-on-one, either over the phone, or she would come meet with you, does a really good job. So, to reach out to that office, specifically within our office, 248-858-0672, and it's on our website as well. Another thing that we want to encourage people, those in our community that are struggling financially, there is a poverty exemption. This is something at the state, but each community has their own. And I should have checked this before I came, but are you all, your own assessor, you go to county equalization?
We use Oakland County.
County, okay. So, yep. So, you reach out to Oakland County Equalization. The number's there, 248-858-0740. Depending on what your income is, you might qualify for this, and this can help you with lowering your property taxes. So, want to make sure people aware of that. And then, last entity I want to touch on, we have no affiliation with them, but they're a nonprofit that we refer a lot of people over to, and they really do a great job in the community. Lake Shore Legal Aid, it is for low-income families and seniors to be able to reach out and get legal services, everything but traffic citations and criminal. They don't deal with criminal law. So, just FYI. I don't know if I said their number. I'll say it again, though, in case people are listening, 1-888-783-8190. And then their website is lakeshorelegalaid.org. And I kind of breezed through that pretty quickly, but, you know, in the interest of the time and everyone that's sitting here, you know, just wanted to, again, emphasize the point that I said earlier is that please reach out to us. We don't know you need help unless you tell us you need help, and we are here to help. Our team is standing by. You know, we're getting closer, you know, as we're, what, mid-February? Close to it. You know, we have about a month and a half, and so, we're doing our best to get in touch with everyone, and please reach out to us. And then, obviously, anyone here, if any of you, we can provide, tax information is all public information, but we can always provide a list if anyone wants to see if they can be helpful with their neighbors. We can get that list over to you. So, I think that's it that I have, but I'm obviously open to any questions that you all might have. I'm also, obviously, I see you at this time every year, but if there's other things going on throughout the year, I'm always happy to come back. But at least for tonight, I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to present this information to everyone here and everyone watching at home.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions from council this evening?
Your Honor. I just have a quick question. So, if you know, what about in terms of seniors? Do you know how many have been foreclosed? I know that you had the money from COVID, but, you know, maybe going forward, you might have more seniors that are going to be foreclosed, do you think?
I don't know that answer. And we can't actually get that information because all we have is whatever their tax information is, so the name that's listed on the property. We don't have social security number, age, date of birth, anything like that. That's not information that we have, so we're not able to run those numbers based on that. You know, that is a population that we are cognizant of and want to do our best to help and make sure that people are able to stay in their homes and age in place in their homes. And so, that's why I would encourage people to reach out to us. We have a new liaison or new department within the county now. The, it's like senior services. I don't remember exactly the title, but I think, did Jim Ellison represent this community too as part of, right? So, Jim Ellison, who is the state rep over here, he and I overlapped in the House, serving together. Jim is heading that department up at the county right now. So, you know, it is something that is very important to us to make sure that, you know, people are able to age in place and stay in Oakland County.
Thank you.
So, I appreciate that question.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from council this evening? All right, Mr. Wittenberg, thank you so much for coming in. We appreciate it, and yes, if we do hear of anyone, we will definitely pass it on.
Thank you. Nice to see all of you again, and thanks for all your work. Very thankless, tireless job, I know. So, I appreciate all of you.
Thank you. All right. Next up this evening, we have Random Acts of Kindness, the 2024 proclamation.
City Council is scheduled to proclaim the week of February the 11th through the 17th as Random Acts of Kindness Week, and we have a proclamation to our very own Marjine Scott. So, whereas daily news is dominated by tragic stories of crime, violence, and disaster, often leaving citizens with feelings of despair and helplessness, and whereas 28 years ago, former councilwoman Marjine Scott, along with Jack Scott, created the very first proclamation and introduced Random Acts of Kindness Week to the city of Madison Heights, and has helped the city celebrate Random Acts of Kindness each year since through her dedicated service to the city, and continues to do so even after her retirement in 2019. And whereas Random Acts of Kindness Week is enacted to encourage Madison Heights residents to commit conscious acts of goodwill as affirmation of the goodness and generosity of the human spirit, and whereas by performing small acts of kindness on a daily basis, we have an opportunity to recognize and celebrate the far-reaching efforts we have as individuals in the world around us. And whereas it is time for everyone to exemplify kindness in our daily lives and make an effort to be better humans, remember to take kindness to heart. The work of being kind never ends, and kindness is truly essential to our survival. Being kind every day is one way we can all make a difference. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and city council proclaim the week of February the 11th through the 17th as Random Acts of Kindness Week and urge all citizens to join in celebrating the week with acts of kindness, patience, and understanding, and we challenge you to make kindness a way of life all year long.
All right, thank you. And Mrs. Scott, did you want to speak this evening? So, for those of you who aren't aware, Marjine Scott and her late husband, Jack, are the ones who started Random Acts of Kindness Week.
Well, I just wanted to tell a little story about that, how it started and what inspired us, because maybe you can do a similar act. But it was in April of 1995, which was a long time ago, as you know. Many of you weren't even here at that point. But in any case, we were having dinner at Steak and Ale Restaurant, which used to be down on Concord Drive, and Jack was going away for the very first time. We were just boyfriend and girlfriend at the time, but very much in love, so we knew we had a future. And anyways, we were there eating at the restaurant, and he was going away to Brazil for six weeks as working with GM, and I was facing some medical concerns as well. So, we were sitting kind of close together because it was the last, when the last time we were going to be together, and when we went to pay the bill, the waitress brought up this paper, little scrap of paper, and there was written on it, "There are too many random acts of violence in this world, so I choose to offset this with a random act of kindness. I saw you two of you sitting close together and thought I would make your evening and do a random act of kindness for you. I'm not so, I'm not wealthy or on social security, but I thought I would do this for you." So, this gentleman had paid the bill for us, over $30, and the tip, and we were just aghast, you know, and we looked out, and I said, "Who was that man?" She said, "Well, he was sitting right over there, and he's a frequent visitor to the restaurant." And I said, "Well, how can we thank him?" She said, "Well, he doesn't really want to be thanked. He just wants you to do a kind act for somebody else." I thought, gee, that's a wonderful idea, and we were so happy. Well, it turned out that I was so frustrated because I couldn't take the man, and if you do a Random Acts of Kindness Week, you probably have doing some similar occurrence and have it happen to you. So, I said, "Jack, what can we do?" He said, "Well, you know, you are just on, started on the city council. Why don't you see if you could start something like this in Madison Heights?" And I thought, "This is a great idea." So, I came here before the council, and I do have the names of the people that were on the council at the time. It was our 21st council, and our mayor was George Suarez. The council members were Doug McLean, Gary McGilvery, who has since passed away, Russell Pierce, who has also passed away, Marilyn Russell, who has passed away, and Mary Frances Steema, and myself. And sure enough, they approved it, and it was success. And then, we had a lot of people from the city take part and really promote it, to the fact that at one point, we were written up in Life magazine because one of the Random Acts of Kindness Week was so touching. We had a hair salon here in Madison Heights go to a nursing center and do all the hair and the nails for the residents, and that was so popular that it was written up in Madison, in Life magazine. So, and we had the national director come and visit us for the day, so we had a lot of activities. But I was going to do Random Acts of Kindness tonight, but unfortunately, it didn't work out because we heard that Larry Sherman, our city attorney, his birthday is tomorrow, and guess who's not here tonight? Your hair, his brother is here in his place. So, we wanted to do that for him. So, what I did was, I picked somebody else to do a Random Acts of Kindness Week, and that is somebody who's actually in this room because I wanted them to react. This person started out working in scouts, and they became the volunteer of the year for the Community Roundtable in May of 2012. And they've also helped chair our parade for years, our Memorial Day Parade, and that's Martha Kehoe, and she's sitting right there. I knew she'd be embarrassed. Now, she'll start crying. That's the next thing. But I wanted her to be honored and recognized for everything she does. She came, she was my guest tonight, and I wanted to thank her. I do have a card here that she gave me, and I thought it was so appropriate to describe her, and I want to read it now if she will be able to get through this. Okay, this was a Valentine's card that was sent to not only myself, but my whole family. And it says, "Special people make the world a brighter, warmer place with pleasant words and thoughtfulness or just a smiling face. Their ways make such a difference, they deserve to know it too. So Valentines are meant for special people just like you." And I would like to say the same thing to our city council, and thank you for all your support for so many years.
All right, thank you. And with that, can I get a motion from council to approve this proclamation?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the proclamation, Ezra.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor, I'll support.
A motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those against say no. Motion carries. Thank you, and thank you, Mrs. Scott, for joining us today, and thank you, Mrs. Kehoe, for everything that you do as well.
Oh, you're welcome. I'd like to be back home.
All right. Next up, we have public hearing. So, this is the public hearing for the Brownfield Plan at 29448 John R. Road. It's the former Act of Adult Center. So, I'm going to open for public comment, and then I'm going to ask for a motion from council. So, this is the option, or this is the opportunity for anyone who wishes to speak specifically about the Brownfield Plan for the former Act of Adult Center. We will have regular public comment after this, but right now, this is specifically for this property, the 29448. So, if there's anyone who wishes to speak on it, I ask that you take the podium. Okay, and seeing no one, I'm going to close public comment and ask for a motion from council to approve.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve. Sorry, do you need me to read the whole thing? You can't hear me? Okay, I'll speak up. I'd like to make a motion to approve the Brownfield TIF Plan for reimbursement of eligible activities as defined by Michigan Brownfield Redevelopment Financing Act, Public Act 381. The developer is proposing is a total not to exceed reimbursement of $2,41,686 for eligible activities over the term of 30 years.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I will support.
All right, thank you. A motion has been made and seconded. Yes.
Can I ask Quinn to make it subject to review and approval of the language in the development agreement and reimbursement agreement by the developer and the city attorney? That was the recommendation of staff.
Okay.
Yes.
Is that okay?
Yes, Ezra.
Okay. And Mr. Fleming?
Agreed.
All right. So, both the maker and support have approved that addition. Is there any discussion from council?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I just want to clarify with staff for the public's record that this was both reviewed and recommended by our volunteer board, the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority in the city of Madison Heights?
Yes, they heard this in January, and they unanimously recommended that city council approve it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from council, comments? All right. Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those against say no. Motion carries 7-0. Thank you. And now, this is going to be the opportunity for the public to speak. So, anyone who has anything they'd like to talk about, you've got three minutes. I ask that you direct your comments to me. Keep your comments to three minutes, and give your name, address, any affiliation with the city. And with that, going to open public comment. Anyone who wishes to speak? Go ahead.
Hi, Martha Covert, Edward Avenue. I haven't been here a while, so I want to start by saying to councilors Muir, Wright, and Rohrbach, thank you for keeping your word of what was promised to us. To the rest of you that voted yes, why? You're afraid of a lawsuit? Has a lawsuit been filed in Oakland County against Madison Heights by those marijuana companies yet? Could I have an answer? Has it been happened? How much money have we spent on it so far? If there's not even been a lawsuit filed, why did you crumble? Why did you say no? Is it what's being put into your campaign funds? Is it what, you know, what? Why would you say yes after we were told? Three. Emily said it perfectly. We were told three when this all started, now it's five. So, if two other people come along, and now maybe a seventh comes along, are you going to fold again and say, "We might be sued"? This is not right. You guys are not, if you're thinking about your public persona and offices you want to hold in the future, are we just a stepping stone so we don't matter? Is that what's happening? Because that's not right. And I see more and more division in this council than the coming together you all said you would do. It's wrong. Think of us before you think of yourselves for your political or private agendas.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
I would like to thank those of you that had the courage and conviction to vote against the two additional marijuana facilities. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I have come to the conclusion after all of this that, A, certain elected officials in the city don't give a rip about what the majority of the citizens prefer; B, certain elected officials don't give a rip about the image of the city; and C, certain elected officials...
And C, certain elected officials don't care about our children's lives and how they are impacted by the visual of all of the marijuana places. There were only supposed to be three. Now there's five and there's seven. You know, when this started, I thought to myself, this could have all been avoided. You should have just said no to any of them right from the start. And there's the old saying, when you lie down with dogs, you come up with fleas. They're going to keep on and they're going to keep on and they're going to keep on threatening lawsuits. And before you know it, we're going to have twenty of them in this little itsy bitsy little city. Thank you. I consider it a random act of kindness for your vote.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening?
Jim Capizo, eight six three, Illinois. Can you understand me?
Could you take off the mask, please? Just, just while you're speaking, it's a bit muffled. If you're okay with it.
Are you talking about the, the senior center over on John R.? That you're, is it Brownfield site or is that something else?
The Brownfield that we just, uh, we just had the public hearing for and we just voted on was the, the former center, yes.
It's, it's a Brownfield site? There is contamination there? It's a big parking lot in the building?
Yes.
So why, why is, how is it a Brownfield site? It's contaminated with something.
It's, it's contaminated.
Well, how did it get contaminated?
It's an old site. It's next to the old incinerator.
Oh, so you're going to fix it and sell it?
It's actually been sold.
Oh, to who?
Um, it's, yeah, it's, it's been sold to a company.
Montura's Management.
Montura's Management. So it was sold, was it six months ago, a year ago?
It was actually sold at the beginning of this project. So we had a, an agreement to sell the property and then we did the final closing this past November.
November.
So they've done all the environmental studies and then they submitted it for Brownfield because it qualifies.
How much did it, did it get for?
It was one point eight million.
All right. Thank, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening? Any topic? Okay. Seeing no one, I'm going to close public comment and open up to consent agenda. So the only thing we have is the city council minutes from January twenty-second. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
Your honor?
Yes.
So move.
All right. Thank you. Is there support?
Your honor.
Support. All right. Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those against say no. Motion carries. And then next up, we have for reports, we have from the city clerk, we have the board and commission appointments. So, find this up here. Um, so normally what we do is we just go through this alphabetically. Do we, nothing on the arts board?
Whatever's up for February.
All right. So we've got, first is for the downtown development authority, the DDA Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. There are three people who are interested. Two of them would be coming back, but I'm going to pass on making any recommendations this evening. A few years ago, the DDA said that they would like to have input and we did not discuss it at our last meeting. So we will be discussing it in the next week or two and we will, I will then have my appointments for our next meeting. So after that, we have the environmental citizens committee. That's what we've got.
Yes. I am going to make a motion to appoint Jason, reappoint Jason Theodore Doroff to a regular term ending in February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-seven. And also appoint Jennifer Bowen to a regular term also ending February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-seven.
All right. Thank you. Is there support?
Your honor?
Yes.
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those against say no. Motion carries. Uh, next up, we have from the historical commission, Mr. Bliss.
Yes, your honor. I move that we reappoint Rebecca Chambliss, Cheryl Suter, Kevin Wright and Jennifer Ballantyne, as well as add in new member Regina Joscas Sova to terms ending two twenty-eight, twenty twenty-seven.
All right. Thank you. Is there support?
Your honor? All support.
All right. Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those against say no. Motion carries. Uh, next up, we have the Human Relations and Equity Commission, Councilor Roebuck.
That'd be actually Councilor Wright.
Oh, my apologies. Changed. Councilor Wright?
Your honor, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Aaron Browning and Jessica Showers, both to regular terms. Um, it looks like these are one-year terms, if I'm reading this right, to twenty twenty-five?
Uh, there's a regular that goes to twenty-seven and then there's a new one, an alternate that goes to twenty-five.
Okay.
Oh, wait, no. Hold on, sorry. I'm looking at the wrong one.
Is that, there's a few persons?
Oh. One, yeah, one of them's only going until August to, when to.
You can appoint them to the two regular seats that expire in twenty twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
I would like to make a motion to appoint Ann Brown and Jessica Showers, both to the regular appointments ending in August thirty-first, twenty twenty-five for the Human Relations and Equity Commission.
Okay. Thank you. Is there support?
Your honor? I'll support.
All right. Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those against say no. Motion carries. And then next up, we have the Information Technology Advisory Committee, Mr. Bliss.
Yes, your honor. I move that we reappoint Scott Toller to the term that ends two twenty-eight, twenty-seven.
All right. Thank you. Is there support?
Your honor?
Yes.
Support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those against say no. Motion carries. And next up, we have the Library Advisory Board. Mr. Holtest?
Yeah, so we want to appoint Toya Aaron, if you'd like, for the one twenty-nine, twenty-four and Regi, sorry. Eight thirty-one, twenty twenty-four. Eight thirty-one, twenty-four. And Regina S Y O B A for the same term.
All right. Is there support?
Your honor? Yes, support.
All right. Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those against say no. Motion carries. Um, next up is Parks and Rec, which is a mayor's appointment and I'm going to defer to, um, Councilor Roebuck. Okay.
Um, I would motion to appoint, reappoint Christopher Mullenkamp and Vicki, Vicki Harris to their seats, um, in regular terms ending two twenty-eight, twenty-six. And also appoint Diana Lenaway to a term, a regular term ending two twenty-eight, twenty-six and Jamie Zimmer to a regular term ending two twenty-eight, twenty-five.
All right. Thank you. Is there, is there support?
Your honor? I'll, I'll support, but is the motion to confirm the mayor's appointment?
I'm sorry, yeah. Motion to confirm.
Motion to confirm the mayor's appointment.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. All right. Um, motion has been made to confirm my appointments and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those against say no. All right. Motion carries. Uh, next up is Planning Commission, which I believe is also mayor's appointment. So Toya Aaron is no longer eligible because she is on another board. And when you're on planning, you cannot be on another board. So I'm just going to take that one right off. Um, I don't believe that either of these two people have come to any of our Planning Commission meetings. So can staff maybe reach out to them and let them know when the meetings are so that we can meet them and just sort of make sure they have a feel for what's happening with those meetings? And then after our next Planning Commission meeting, I will be happy to make those appointments based on that information. And then finally, we have the Zoning Board of Appeals. And Mr. Fleming, that is you?
Yep, that's me. I will appoint Mark Kimball and Cindy Holder for reappointment to their terms, two twenty-eight, twenty-seven. And then also Toya Aaron and Rahul Sagar, who will also have the same term, two twenty-eight, twenty, twenty-seven.
All right. Thank you. All right. Thank you. Is there support?
Your honor?
Yes.
Just to clarify, you said she can't be on two boards or she can?
Oh, no, no, no. She can't be on planning. So just, just to clarify for everybody.
Support.
Okay, just, I'll just, okay. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay. So I will make a quick discussion. So the way that Planning Commission works, if you're on Planning Commission, you cannot be on any other boards. And we had a situation a few years ago where we had someone who was on the Historical Board. We appointed them to Planning and because we appointed them to Planning, they had to leave the Historical Board. So if Toya was put on the Planning Commission, she wouldn't be allowed to be on any other boards. And that is how come her name came off of.
Your honor?
Yes.
With the exception of the one person that's on zoning, that's also on planning.
Yes, with the exception of the one person who was on both.
Your honor, is it possible to give her that choice then? I mean, because we can, it's really up to her which one she'd rather be on.
Okay. Well, you know what? Let's, let's do one thing at a time then. Let's do one thing at a time. So right now, oh, okay, I see. Well, so Toya's already on library, so that means that she can, she can be on zoning. She just can't be on the planning.
Well, your honor, unless zoning appoints her as the representative of zoning to the Planning Commission, that would be an option for them as well.
Do we, um, your honor, do we know who the clerk?
It's Cliff Oglesby.
Who's it?
It's Cliff Oglesby.
Okay.
Your honor?
Yes.
I feel like there's a lot of questions in the audience all of a sudden about what are we talking about? And I'd like to hear an explanation of the one person who's allowed to be on both boards.
Okay. Um, I don't want to get stuck with where we're at right now. All right. So there is one person who is on both the zoning and the Planning Commission. Okay? But anybody else on planning cannot be on other.
Okay, but that's not a city council appointment. That's an appointment from the zoning board to the Planning Commission. So that's not a vacant seat on here that you would be filling. So if, if that were something that wanted to happen, so in this particular situation, Toya could not be appointed to the Library Advisory Board. She could be appointed to planning or she could be appointed to zoning and the Library Board. But if the Zoning Board of Appeals then decided to appoint her to the Planning Commission, that's up to them and she would have to resign from the Library Advisory Board. So I guess if you wish to ask her, as she's sitting in front of you, does she want the planning seat and nothing else, then that's up to council. But if you accept the Planning Commission seat, you could not serve on any other board in the city.
So, okay. All right. So I would say let's, let's make the appointments to zoning as indicated with these four people, which do include Toya. And if at their next meeting, they make a decision that instead of having Cliff on the planning, they want Toya on the planning and she decides to accept that, then she would be put on planning in place of Cliff and, but she would need to vacate her library board position.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. But for now, the appointment is for Toya to zoning and she's already been approved on library. So motion has been made, seconded and discussion. Any other discussion?
Your honor?
Does that clarify? Still questions?
I still have a question. Who, who are, who's going?
Who's being appointed to zoning?
Okay. It's, Mark and Cindy are going to be reappointed.
Okay.
And then Toya and Rahul.
Are the regular members?
Are the regular. Thanks. Clear up?
Cleared.
Clear as much? Yep. All right. Any other questions or comments? Okay. So all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those against say no. Motion carries. All right. Thank you. And that's it. Uh, next up, we have Forbidden Awards purchases from the purchasing coordinator, the Gateway signage project.
So the city of Madison Heights has been working to update our public image and branding efforts. As a part of this ongoing branding plan, the city worked with Idina Nation Orange out of Hazel Park and a member of our chamber, with a committee made up of members of the DDA, the planning, city council and staff to develop a gateway sign design with specifications. We issued an RFP in November and have been working with Quality Roots, one of the three marijuana companies at the time, that's opening on Fourteen Mile, to fund this strategic plan of gateway signs. They have put up an additional donation of twenty-five thousand dollars to cover the design and specifications and will be covering the project installations in phases, beginning at fourteen and John R., with subsequent phase donations to complete all eight installations throughout the city. On November twenty-eighth of twenty twenty-three, the city received proposals from four companies. Johnson Signs was the apparent low bidder with a total of a hundred and forty-eight thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars plus one thousand dollars for prototype cost. The initial location at 14 Mile and John R has been quoted at $19,500. City staffs checked the references for Johnson Signs, which came back very favorable. So if approved, staff will work with Johnson Signs and Quality Roots to establish a phase fabrication and installation schedule agreeable to all parties. Therefore, staff and I recommend that council approve the award of this RFP to Johnson Signs for fabrication and installation of all eight gateway signs for a total amount of $149,815 to be phased funded with the initial sign installation at 14 Mile and John R. Council will be updated regarding other installation locations and timing once the funding and production schedule have been finalized.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I move that council concurs with staff and awards the RFP to Johnson Signs for fabrication and installation of all eight gateway signs for a total of $149,815, phased funded and, yeah, phased funded with the initial sign installation at 14 Mile and John R.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I will support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor. Just that it's a, it is a lot of money, and so my expectation is these signs are going to last for decades before we're going to have to do this again at some point. Well, a future council that's not us is going to have to do this.
Okay. Any other discussion, comments?
Your Honor, I'm just going to say, you know, we, we've heard for years that there are, you know, we wish that these signs look better, especially not necessarily one at 14 and John R, but, you know, the ten in progress and the, you know, the, the image of Madison Heights. And we've seen it happen in other cities, like I go to Oak Park and Ferndale and other places are putting up these signs, and it, it seems like a really small thing. But it makes a big difference in how people perceive us and perceive the city. It ends up improving people's property values and like the way that people take care of the space that they live in. Things like that start to improve when we make these small improvements as a city. So I'm glad we're doing it. I hope that people see it as a positive thing. And, you know, I'm glad that we're able to leverage the funds that are coming to the city to do something that's going to kind of lift us all up in this way.
All right, thank you. Is there any other discussion, comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, those against say no. Motion carries. And with that, we are done our regular business, and I invite closing comments, starting with Mr. Mu.
Thank you, Your Honor. As we all know, February is Black History Month, and we, we know some of the more famous Rosa Parks and those folks. I've been learning some of the contributions that African Americans have made to space and other things following along with our elementary schools. So I'm enjoying that journey, have learned more about Black history. I also learned that the first Black firefighter in Detroit was appointed in 1893. And he served eight years. I'm happy to say that we had our first city school liaison committee meeting last week. I kind of ran this small snafu, but I was able to join by phone. Thanks Melissa and Sean for all of their work that they've kind of put into public traffic safety and some of the things with that, so I look forward to getting that going. February is also, we're red for heart health awareness, so I'm trying to support that. The city office folks all wore red a week or so ago, so. I was able to attend the MML training a couple of weeks ago. That was the highlight of, since we met last. I also, we had dinner with the Waring Council folks, so that was, that was a big plus. I ran into some small snafus health-wise, so that, that was the, the highlight of my week, were those things, the last couple of weeks. And as we discussed tonight, is Random Acts of Kindness Week here in Madison Heights. Some, through my years on the school board, one of the, the gifts that I was given was a small rock, and on it was printed, "The smallest splash of kindness can create an endless ripple." So in, in a world where we can be just about anything, let's just be kind. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bliss?
Yes, Your Honor. First of all, Councilman Muir, I'm glad you're feeling better and you're able to be here with us tonight. Second thing I want to highlight, we've got, well, counting myself and Councilman Fleming, we have five members of the Historical Commission in the room here tonight. And so it's probably fitting to update everybody on the relaunch and reopening of our Heritage Rooms and the, the program that we decided to launch it with. So at our last Historical Commission meeting, we voted to do a program based on the history of music. And it'll go through not just, like, the different mediums from eight-tracks to streaming, but we're going to talk about the actual businesses in the City of Madison Heights that were manufacturing cassette tapes and eight-tracks and vinyl records here in the city. And not just Motown, but all sorts of artists, and we're, we're going to show real examples. Michael Shepard, the owner of Northern Audio Service and one of the members of our DDA, is going to join me along with a few special guests to be able to present on the history of music in our city and beyond. But also, we're going to have some interactive elements, some different players from my collection, from Northern Audio Store, and we'll give people the ability to have some hands-on experiments with it. And this is all going to go down, so we found the date of April 22nd, which is a council meeting night. And you're thinking, why would you do that on a council meeting night? Well, because we're going to double dip, y'all. We're going to start at 6:00 with our history music. The actual presentation's going to go for about 40 minutes or so. And then we're going to open up the Heritage Rooms and push everybody down to be able to experience that museum, which has been closed since the pandemic. And it, it went through a flood, it went through, it's, it's been through some things, like all of us since COVID. And so it'll be a great time for everybody to be able to come down and enjoy it. The Arts Board just voted to partner up on some form of entertainment that they will be participating in that night. And then at the meeting, we're also going to unveil the three former members of city council pioneers who helped us build this city that we'll be honoring this year, just as we did last year. And so all of that will be happening that same evening, April 22nd. I hope that you will join us. It'll be a fun and exciting way to re-experience our historical museum, which is just downstairs in the basement of City Hall. That's it, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mr. Wright?
Thank you, Your Honor. Wanted to start off by saying Happy Black History Month. Black history, as Bill pointed out, is something that we celebrate on a regular basis because there are still barriers that still have to be broken down. There are still people who are knocking down walls. As I sit and see the first woman of color to serve on our city council sit right across from me in 2013, I'm sorry, 2022, and it's 2023. There are still many obstacles. I have three daughters. That's why I go by Counselor Quinn Wright instead of Councilman, because we're still fighting for equity and equality and inclusion on so many fronts. And so I just would encourage you to do more than look at a small microcosm, but let's look at our neighbors with kindness, with love, with generosity, with peace, and be inclusive in our language and our thought of them and understanding of their situation. That's it for me.
Thank you. Mr. Sherman, anything from attorneys?
Yes, Your Honor. In regard to Margine's Random Acts of Kindness Week, I just want to tell a very short story that happened last week. I was in court, had a very busy docket, and when it was concluded, I decided, you know what, I'm going to stop off at Starbucks and get a coffee. And I was at one of those Starbucks where you could get into line from different directions. And a car, my car and another person's car came at the exact same time, and I deferred to that car, and they got ahead of me. And when I went up to get, after that car was done and they got their drink, I came up and I said, how much do I owe you? They said, your drink has been taken care of. So that was a true story. So by all means, engage in Random Acts of Kindness. It, it pays off, and then pay it forward.
Thank you. Mrs. Marsh?
I don't think I have anything.
All right. Anything from the clerk's office this evening?
Yes, Mayor. The early voting is starting Saturday, February 17th through Sunday, February 25th. The location is going to be at the Royal Oak Senior Center at 3500 Marias Avenue in Royal Oak. The hours are Monday through, I'm sorry, Saturday through Sunday, 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m., but Thursday is from noon to 8:00 p.m. If you have any questions, please contact the clerk's office. Our phone number is 248-583-0826. This information is also on the city website, www.madison-highs.org. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilor Rohrbach?
I'm just going to say, I want to tell everybody that there is an Asian Food Culture Fair coming Sunday, March 10th, 11:30 to 6:00, at one of those buildings over on Horace Brown Drive. I don't know where I'm pointing right now, not at the building. And nearby here by City Hall, it's, it's being led by the D-Asian Media Group and, but a lot of the different Asian food groups, group, food, can I speak today? I would love to. Different Asian food restaurants are going to be having vendors there. It's free admission. It's going to be really wonderful and a great way to celebrate our community. So please make it out there on March 10th. We also have the Human Relations and Equity Commission. One of the things that we do is a, a book club or, you know, a suggested book reading each month. And those are always available at the library. They're very proudly displayed near the checkout desk. And so, and then each month, there is a discussion night. So the second Tuesday of every month is the discussion night for the novels and neighbors book discussion. So I just invite everybody to come out for those. I think it starts at 6:00 p.m. at the library. You can have read the book. You don't have to have read it. You know, you can just come out to talk with your neighbors about novels. You just might enjoy reading books. So whatever it is, it's just an opportunity. This month is tomorrow night, 6:00 p.m. They're going to be talking about Children of Blood and Bone, which was the, the book for the past month. So, you know, if you can, make it out. It's a, it's a great opportunity. And then I hope everybody enjoys their punch keys tomorrow. And, you know, if I could speak French, I would say that thing that you say in French for Mardi Gras, but. Bon temps, I don't know.
Merci.
I can't say it. I don't want to introduce, I know. L'asier, les bons temps brûlés. I won't even do it. Sorry, sorry.
Councilman Fleming.
Yeah. The Madison Heights Memorial Day Parade is held on this year, on 2024, Saturday, May the 25th. And the parade is looking for and seeking participants to participate in the parade. Every year, we're trying to build the parade bigger and better, and we need your support to try to find people and participants to be in the parade. You can have a group of people, or you could be a person also, or an organization to be in the parade. And you can sign up at, the website is madisonheightsparade.org, and that's where you register. You just put your name in, your telephone number, your organization, all your contact information, and you're, you're on the list. And then you will get further information as time gets closer to the parade. Also, the Madison Heights Police Department is hosting a free Narcan training on Wednesday, February 21st, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the police department. Narcan is a, is used for those, to save lives of those who have overdosed on narcotics. And it's, it's something that you could use, you can, the Narcan comes in a little small box that you can carry with you all the time, in your purse, in your car, wherever you're going. And it could be used to definitely save lives anywhere at any time. And then finally, the, the DTE, the lights on 11 Mile from I-75 to John R, I've been following up on that from the DPS. And they do have back on, on 11 Mile, half the lights on the, the southbound side of the street. But the northbound, they're still working to, to get that all restored. And I'm hoping that it'll be sooner than later, because it is still kind of, you know, dark on, on 11 Mile. But having better lights and more reliable electricity powering them up is better than it was, so that's it.
Thank you. Councilman Soltes?
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. I just want to thank Councilwoman Margine Scott for being here tonight. So glad to see you. She was, she was always such a fair councilwoman. You were my mentor all those years together. And so I, I really appreciate you, all that you've done, and, and thank you.
All right, thank you. I've just got a couple of things. So I want to thank everyone who came out to the Holocaust panel that, that we had a couple of weeks ago. Really wasn't sure what kind of turnout we would have, and they ended up having to bring in more chairs. So it was literally standing room only, so appreciate that. A few people asked me afterwards what we were going to do next, and I don't know. But I would love to host another panel. If there's a topic that anybody is interested in having done, you know, reach out to me, and we'll see what we can do. I would be very interested in hosting another panel on whatever topic makes sense for you guys. Random Acts of Kindness, I think we all have different stories, but I really appreciate Mrs. Scott coming this evening and just setting this up so many years ago. So thank you. And as Councilor Rohrbach alluded to in her, her invocation this evening, be kind. You know, and I think Mr. Muir said that as well, you know, be kind. And I know there was a period of time where Council Wright would end all his comments with, remember, be kind. And I think that's just something that we all need to remember. You, you don't always know what someone's going through. You can't look at them and say, oh, your life is perfect. You have no worries. Everyone has a bottle you don't know about. The, the May, the March 10th event is coming up. We have a really vibrant Asian culture in the city, and, you know, I invite everyone to come out. It's a free event. You'll never know what kind of foods or delicacies you may find. I believe it is from 12:00 to 6:00, I think it is. Does that sound correct?
Something like 11:00 to 6:00.
11:00 to 6:00, okay, and that is on March 10th over on Horace Brown. And then finally, on February 26th at 10:00 in the morning, from 10:00 to about 11:30, Attorney General is going to be at our Active Adult Center talking about senior scams. Councilman Soltes, or, sorry, Councilman Fleming had brought her in about a year and a half ago to talk to our seniors, and she's, she's coming back. So I invite you to come to that as well. It's just, it's really important that everyone, not just seniors, but that everyone knows what to look for with scams. And just, you know, to make sure that you keep your eye on everything. And with that, I'm going to adjourn this meeting. The time is 8:28. Our next meeting will be February 26th. Good night.